Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the April 15th, 2024 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We are meeting at the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio, and the time is 5:00. Before we begin, I'd like to request a moment of silence. Next, I'd like to recognize our following Board of Commissioners present this evening. Mr. Rob Ross. Ms. B. Bassnight. Thank you all for being here tonight, and certainly all the support that you too and the other board members do for us and our students and staff. So thanks for seeing y'all tonight. Now I'll turn the meeting over to our Vice Chair, Mr. Woody.
Hey, welcome, everybody. I'm glad to see a bunch of faces here, and I hope there's a lot of people online watching and listening. I hope everybody had a wonderful break, and with that, we're going to have Annatiche Alidus in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is to approve the agenda. Do I have approval for the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve the agenda.
Have a motion on the floor by Mr. Woody, second by Ms. Bothwell. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries. Next, we'll move the meeting over to public comments, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Hitt, our attorney.
It's my understanding there's no public comment signed up for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're now moved to the announcements, and I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bassnight as well to hear from Ms. Tinch from our student advisor. Mr. Bassnight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. Good evening, everyone. Thrilled to be back here. I've got a couple of things to celebrate tonight that I want to bring everybody's attention to. One of those actually occurred over spring break. No, we didn't give our assistant principals the week off in honor of National Assistant Principals Week, but it did occur between April 1st and April 5th and corresponded with our, the week we were, we were at, taking a deep breath. We, we do plan to recognize our assistant principals this Thursday and our district leadership assistant principals meeting at COA, so we'll do a little celebrating with them on Thursday during the day. Next thing on the agenda is the, April has been designated as School Library Month, and Governor has issued a proclamation that I'd like to read to the board. Proclamation by the Governor of the State of North Carolina, whereas school libraries promote literacy, foster an enjoyment of reading, and help students develop the skills they need to assess and evaluate information; and whereas school libraries serve an invaluable resource that provide both mirrors and windows for our students in our schools, reflecting on their own experiences, cultures, and identities, while also offering glimpses into the diverse perspectives and realities of others, thereby fostering empathy, understanding, and inclusivity among learners; and whereas school libraries offer educational activities designed to enhance reading motivation, establish the information literacy skills necessary for lifelong learning, and promote competency in new and developing technologies; and whereas the full potential of school libraries is dependent upon certified professional librarians whose varied skills support administrators, teachers, and students in effectively engaging in a wide range of teaching and learning technologies and information resources; and whereas it is important to recognize school libraries and the qualified school librarians for the vital role they play in creating an inclusive and relevant academic environment throughout the state of North Carolina, including the availability of carefully curated school library collections; and whereas Governor Cooper has proclaimed 2024 the Year of Public Schools, underscoring their importance in our society, and the state of North Carolina proudly recognizes the hard work of school library staff and the contributions of school libraries make in fostering a lifelong interest in learning for students across our state. Therefore, Governor Roy Cooper of the state of North Carolina do hereby proclaim April 2024 as School Library Month in North Carolina and commend its observance to all citizens. Next announcement, I would like to ask Mr. Wallen to come to the front before I formally introduce him. Thank you for being here tonight, too. Some of you may know Duke. Duke works at First Flight High School. He's the CDC at First Flight High School, the Career Development Coordinator. But Duke does so much more. He's, he's located in the library. He's got an office there in the, I mean, in the guidance office, and generally you walk in there, he's, he's probably not in his office, he's somewhere around the school. He's established several things at First Flight High School, the Career Cafe, which is upstairs in the rotunda, which highlights career and technical education at First Flight High School. He has events throughout the school, regular events throughout the school, that highlight what goes on in our career and technical education at First Flight High School. But the reason he's here tonight is because I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the fact that Duke Wallen is now Dr. Duke Wallen, having just completed his doctorate. So Duke, congratulations. Thank you for everything you do. Yes, sir. And the last thing in our announcements tonight is a new promotional video that is just, has just started airing with Current TV on kindergarten kickoff. So if we can play that.
We are excited that we get to host our kindergarten kickoff events at each of our elementary schools, and they are going to be on Tuesday evenings starting April 16th and then ranging all the way to May 14th at each of the schools from 5:00 to 6:30. We have stations set up at each site, and we also partnered with Children and Youth Partnership to help provide us with some information and takeaways. We are excited to be able to offer notary services at these events to help break down the barrier of people not being able to have the complete registration packet. We also have our pediatrician offices coming to several of our sites to help set up doctors' appointments, because one of the big barriers that we've seen is we have families that come in, and they think they have everything, and then they're missing either a notary on some of the documents and/or they have their physical but not their immunization record, and those are both required parts.
I hope that after they visit their child's school, they will walk away knowing what it's going to look like for their child, what the expectations are, some of the ways that they can get their child ready for kindergarten, and just feel really secure and, and know that their child is going to be okay and have a great kindergarten year.
One thing that we are going to be implementing at kindergarten kickoff this year that is a little different, in addition to the notary and the pediatrician offices, is we will have some activities for students to engage in while their parents are asking questions about registration or asking the classroom teachers questions. There's going to be activities at each of the stations that were used during our Pathway to School Readiness events that happened back in February.
Well, the Path to School Readiness events that we did back in February were designed to start bringing kids in to think about the transition to kindergarten a little bit earlier than in the spring. So we had events at three of our sites that just kind of got to be an introduction for the kids and their families to the kindergarten classrooms and the school as a whole. Now we're segueing into the kindergarten kickoff events, and then we are also planning another event coming up in the summer that's going to be fun called Popsicles on the Playground, where students will get to come and again meet the kindergarten team and just have like a fun day at the schools outside in the summertime. The idea is that if we're doing these events all throughout the year, that the kindergarten transition doesn't start right when your child is ready for kindergarten, that it can start even the year before that or even at three years old.
I feel like kindergarten kickoff is one of those feel-good, intentional events that we put on to really build a community within not only Dare County but within each school. You are putting your most important piece of your life with us and trusting us, and this is a way for us to reach out and really be intentional with those interactions.
I want to thank Elementary Director Katie Spruill and her staff and everybody that contributed to these events. They're, they're, they're really going out of their way to provide our parents and our community with the information before students get to school, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when I do a presentation a little bit later. But we're, we're reaching out to parents and community organizations to, to get them the information instead of waiting for day one of kindergarten or pre-K and start talking about that. So I'm doing a tremendous job. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I think you said Anna is going to start?
Fifth grade, and was well attended by families. The Odyssey of the Mine team won at the state level and is moving on to the world competition. Students are practicing their acts for the annual talent show on April 26th. Second graders are very excited to be watching chicken eggs hatch in their classrooms. KHES is looking forward to kindergarten cultural exchange on April 19th to showcase Columbia. Our Raise a Reader pre-K parent event is on April 25th. Third through fifth grade anti-bowling assembly featuring BMX bikes is on May 1st, and our K through second grade music program is on May 3rd. First Flight Elementary students in pre-K through fifth grade are currently working on their STEAM projects that they will be presenting at STEAM Night on April 25th from 5:30 to 6:30 at First Flight Elementary School. During the month of April, FFES is having community experts come talk to each grade level, and students are preparing interview questions that are aligned to their project. We are so excited to provide an opportunity for deeper learning as our students learn how their projects align to real-world occupations. A big thank you to Elizabethan Gardens, Jockeys Ridge, Alligator River National Wildlife Refuge, Coastal Studies Institute, U.S. Coast Guard, Kate Sutherland, and Jason Hathcock for being experts and coming to share their expertise with our students. We invite all to come to our STEAM Night on April 25th to see our students' projects and celebrate their hard work. This past month has been filled with many of our First Flight Middle School students sharing talents and winning individual and group awards. Two students, Harry Lipchak and Ethan Mishler, entered the Coastal Studies Institute Winter Ryan Contest and won first place. Ms. Gray, Ms. Wise, and Ms. Bassnight helped facilitate their learning. Recently, we had three Odyssey of the Mine teams do well enough at the regional competition to move up to states. While at states, they won third, fourth, and sixth places in each of their problems, which kept them from moving up to this world's year, but we are super proud of their creativity and hard work. I'm grateful for Ms. McCain's, our teacher leader, who has supported this program. The seventh and eighth grade Seahawk Band attended a music performance adjudication and received a rating of excellent. In addition, seventh grader Haley Rhodes Timpani and eighth grader Samantha Klein Flute participated in the Athena Music Virtual Honor Band. Seventh grader Ava Randolph Flute participated, oh, Oboe, was selected for all district concert band, and eighth grader Danny Trice Tenor Saxophone was selected for all district symphonic band. Lastly, the following students participated in the Albemarle Band Clinic. Eighth grader Samantha Klein Flute, Lexie Robertson Flute, Danny Trice Tenor Saxophone, Sophia Brewer Trombone, along with seventh graders Ava Randolph Oboe, Declan Liverman Horn, and Mason Zhang Percussion. Lastly, the mathlete team participated in a contest right before spring break, and our team received second place overall. We had two students, Harry Lipchak and Ben Cortez, who received third and fourth places. We are so very proud of our students. For First Flight High School, I'm delighted to share some exciting news about the outstanding achievements and remarkable students at my school. Their dedication, talent, and hard work continue to shine brightly, both in the classroom and on the sports field. First and foremost, congratulations to Anya Preston, Juliana Forte, and Saxon Jimenez for representing Dare County in First Flight in the NCDAs 58th Annual Poetry and Arts Competition. A big round of applause goes to Alex Sharp and Autumn Sailor for their remarkable achievement in winning first place in the North Carolina Renewable Energies Contest. Their innovative ideas and commitment to sustainability are truly inspiring. FFHS helped the Occupation Students of America team, also made us proud by competing in three events at the state competition. Catalina Loki and Kira Thomas demonstrated exceptional skills by placing 12th out of 39 in CPR and first aid, while Ava Daniels showcased her talent in nursing assisting and secured 15th place out of 38 participants. Suvelin Jimenez displayed impressive knowledge by competing in the Path of Physiology Knowledge Test and placing 22nd out of 68 competitors. Congratulations on their remarkable achievements. Last but certainly not least, a huge congratulations to Heath Miller for making the first-team All-State Jazz Band. His musical talent and dedication have earned him this prestigious and well-deserved recognition. Go First Flight, and thank you.
Hi, everyone. We'll start out with Nags Head Elementary, where students and staff are gearing up for their third nine weeks PBIS celebration. Last Friday, they hosted their first-ever club day for students that met their PBIS goals. Teachers and staffs hosted various clubs for students to attend, including rock painting, soccer, board games, drama, gardening, and bracelet making. The third nine weeks award ceremonies will be held on Friday, April 19th in the gym. Students will be recognized for their hard work and positivity during the last nine weeks. Finally, students received a hands-on planting experience with the Elizabethan Gardens. Students traveled to Doughty Park to learn about the life cycle of a plant, and students were able to participate in the planting of their own sprouts. The classrooms are growing the seedlings and measuring their growth and progress, and a special thank you to the Elizabethan Gardens for this activity. Next, at Manio Elementary School, multiple parent engagement activities will be held this month. On Tuesday, April 16th, they are having a local family math night at Fooderama and Piggly Wiggly from 5:00 to 7:00, where students will showcase their knowledge through standard-specific learning targets. MMS has also partnered with Manio Middle and Manio High School, where avid and National Junior Honor Society students will be present to help support their families. Then, on Tuesday, April 23rd, they're hosting a kindergarten kickoff from 5:00 to 6:30, like we spoke about before and watched the video. Next, at Manio, Manio Middle School, a go grant for $14,000 for an outdoor classroom space was received, and this grant was applied for by Ms. Carrie Hausnick. MMS also received the Trailblazer Grant of $10,000, applied for by Ms. Kelsey Oglesby. This grant will be funding the fishing club, where students will learn the act of making fishing, baits and lures, the science behind fishing, and enjoy field trips related to fishing. MMS also received a $2,000 grant from the Dare County Education Foundation for two 3D printers. This grant was applied for by Ms. Kim Dickinson. MMS had several students that received awards for their artwork in our art show this past weekend. Isla Curles won four ribbons for her Billfish series of drawings and also got chosen for a superintendent's award. Salome Suarez won, also sixth grade, also won superintendent's award, and Parker Price, seventh grade, won a superintendent's award as well. Finally, at Manio High School, the MHS Mathletes did very well at the ECSU Math Competition on Thursday, March 28th, just before spring break. We placed first in Math II and Math III, as well as third in the comprehensive category. Some of our students that won awards were Finnegan Davis, Sarah Marshall Gallup, Zamarra Perez Shavaria, Whitney Salazar, and Caroline Tyre. All had great, great placements for our team. On Friday, April 12th, three of our teachers were awarded Dare County Education Foundation grants. Ms. Leah Dixon and Lisa Matthews received funding for avid Wicker 3D marble run, and Jimmy Metzinger received funding for functional training to students to promote health and wellness. Avid Family Night will be held at MHS on April 18th at 6:00 p.m. This event is for all current and rising MHS avid families. MHS is hosting the prom on Saturday, April 20th at Jeanette's Pier, and our theme is All the Lights This Year. And finally, in partnership with the SECUE, we will have a Reality of Money event held on April 23rd, where students will learn life lessons about money management and navigating their financial future. Thank you.
Hi. At KHES, they hosted a very successful and well-attended Duke Energy Science Night on Thursday, April 11th. Students and their families traveled around the school to 12 stations where they were all, where they were able to explore things such as force called buoyancy by designing and building a boat with a simple household material. Discover how powerful air can be, even though we can't see it. Identify the three main fingerprints patterns and discover which types you have. How to complete an electrical circuit by trying to transfer energy through different materials. Build different flying machines to experiment with the four forces of flight. Build a noise maker and discover why we can hear and sometimes feel sound, and so much more. The joy on their faces as they learned about science with their families was priceless. On Wednesday, April 10th, Erin Delmoni was awarded a Dare Education Foundation grant for our middle school PBIS incentive program to support our students making good grades, low absences, and good decisions. Additionally, in our high school, students were challenged to do their best based on the components of the hurricane matrix: participation, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. As a result, almost 70 students were awarded a pizza lunch from Angelo's and bowl two games. Thank you Angelo's and Outer Banks Bowling Center for being flexible and supportive of our trip. Thank you to the Hatters Island Youth Education Foundation and Bright Ideas Grant for helping this incredible experience. This weekend, our theater program will be launching its biggest production yet, The Little Mermaid. Showtimes are available Friday to Sunday. Please see our Facebook page for times and ticket locations. This also wasn't included, but I think it should have been. On March 20th, the band, we went to Riverside High School, and we did the musical performance That's what it was. And we got superiors all across the board, which was on three songs and then our sight reading, and Mr. McCroskey was smiling the hardest I've ever seen him smile since the seven years I've had him. So I just wanted to say that because I'm really proud of the band. Thank you.
And I think I have a picture of y'all in my presentation a little bit later, so you're going to be recognized.
Thank you, ladies. Right now, the board will take a short recess, and we'll reconvene in about five minutes.
Right now, the board will take a short recess, and we'll reconvene in about five minutes. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Next on the item of the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor by Ms. Bothwell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any need? Motion carries. Next, we'll have an item of information, and the first report will be from Ms. Bothwell. Take your time.
Yes, I'm going to give you a little report on the state of the child that was held on March 14th. All the usual suspects from the Board of Education and central office staff were in attendance. It was quite a full day. It was speakers and breakout sessions. Sheila Davies gave a great presentation on data overview. It was a bit daunting. We need to make sure our kids are being observed, so nobody falls through the cracks. There needs to be a call of action for childcare in North Carolina. Two other speakers presented about a pathway to positive childhood experiences and well-being. Top of the list for pressing needs are infant, toddler, childcare, and mental health services, and that's a biggie. We also had testimonials from Dare County residents regarding child welfare and education, what is needed and what is going well. Our own Anna Tinch was on the panel and did a superb job. Then we broke into different groups and talked about different issues facing education these days. The facilitators took in-depth notes to bring back to their steering committees so they can work on the next steps. All in all, it was a really great day of learning and education. Conversation.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bothwell. Next, I'll turn it over to Mr. Payne for our visitation at Manio Middle School and First Flight High School.
Thank you. Mr. Twitty and I had the honor of going to Manio Middle School and First Flight High School. When you bring donuts for everybody, I think they can smell them in the parking lot. It was nice to be able to provide donuts for all the staff and teachers. They appreciated us being there. It was nice to see everybody, get a chance to talk to a number of people. Is Mr. Tyson still here? No, he left. He took a dozen or two home with him, I think. But it was good to get in the schools and see the students and meet with the faculty and staff, and we had a good time. I think they really appreciate us being there. I want to thank Tammy Harper and Mr. Tyson for being such gracious hosts. We had a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Next, we'll turn it over. We have several administrative reports, so I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Bassnight to lead this portion of the meeting, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Casidio will come forward. She's going to talk a little bit this evening about a computer science requirement course. There's lots of things going on in Dare County schools that sometimes don't get all the attention. It's the things that happen behind the scenes that create the situations for everything to be in place the following year. And we're going to have several reports tonight. Before we start the reports, and I apologize, I wanted to thank y'all for going into the schools and for bringing donuts and coffee, but for being there and allowing yourselves to be open to the staff and the students and making those connections. Because, you know, this is a meeting, but that's what's important. So thank you very much for doing that. Dr. Casidio.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate you letting me be here. I just wanted to give you a brief update. So the North Carolina passed the House Bill 8, which updates the graduation requirements. And within that legislation, there's a computer science requirement that has two prongs. The first prong relates to middle school. And in that, it states that we must offer introductory computer science middle school course, middle school-level course, to students to have the option to take. We already satisfy that requirement in all of our middle schools with the current course offerings that we already have available. The second prong to the computer science graduation requirement is for our high school students. And in that, it states that students must take and pass one of the listed computer science courses that the state has determined. And, for example, Adobe, that's one of the approved courses that would meet the graduation requirement. This requirement for students would decrease the number of required electos by one. So if they have to take, for example, Adobe, that would take away one of the electos instead. So it's not adding a class. There are some challenges to the second prong. This biggest one is this is an unfunded mandate from the legislation. In that, so DPI is not providing any additional teachers to teach any of these classes, nor any additional licensure options to teach these classes. So, for example, if there was, per se, a math teacher that would teach a section of Adobe, well, to order DPI's response to licensure is that if a general education teacher would be willing to teach one of these classes, they could take a 40-hour course to add to their license. So, again, there's a lot of complexity to be able to implement this for the high school level. And so we've been in communication with DPI for clarification in looking at the '25-'26 school year, and we've posed several questions to them. So at this time, we have submitted the waiver questionnaire that gathered input from school districts on the concerns relative to the implementation for the high school. So, is there any questions on that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Next, Dr. Leah Lane.
Good evening. This is my first time presenting in front of a Board of Education, and I'm not nervous at all. Hi, my name's Leah Lane, and I'm one of your MTSS coordinators. I'm very excited to be here today to share information about sports-specific youth mental health first aid, a voluntary sportified course for our coaches, athletic directors, athletic trainers, and other key personnel who work directly with student athletes here in Dare County schools. The number-one protective factor against mental health challenges and suicide in young people is at least one trusted adult in their life. Quite often, that person is an athletic coach. However, 70% of coaches agree that while they have a role in supporting the mental health of our student athletes, almost 50% report that they lack the confidence to recognize and approach a student athlete who may be facing a crisis. With the high number of sports programs in Dare County schools, we have a tremendous opportunity to support our student athletes through a whole health, youth mental health first aid course, which teaches coaches how to identify, understand, and respond to signs of mental health and substance use challenges for 12-18-year-olds. Specifically, the team around the team learns the tools and skills to notice the signs and symptoms of a mental health challenge, how to approach an athlete with care and compassion, how to connect a student athlete with real help, and it also includes expanded content on trauma, substance use, self-care, and the impact of social media and bullying. The course is a blended virtual format with two hours of self-paced online instruction and a five-hour instructor-led Zoom. It's offered through the end of August 2024, and sessions can be scheduled on a teacher workday, after school, and on Saturdays to meet the needs of our coaching staff. What's more, the training is provided at no cost to the participants or to Dare County schools, and those who complete the certification process receive a $150 gift certificate. They also receive ongoing support, as included, from Whole Health Sports. All of this is possible through a partnership between Whole Health Sport and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It's funded by the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021, Public Law 116-260, through the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. Any questions?
Do you have any questions, Ms. Payne? By the way, you've done an outstanding job. It'll be your first time.
Thank you.
I think you've done it before, but maybe it's the first time to us.
Thank you, Leah.
Next, we have Ms. Fallon.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. So I just wanted to update the board on where we are with our student advisors to the board for the next school year. I want to start by saying thank you to our current student advisors. We will celebrate those students at our May meeting and recognize our inaugural group in that role, so thank you for that. Our application window for 11th graders is closed, so right now, I'm in the process of setting up interviews with the board team. We'll do that at the end of April. That'll give us time in April to get our teacher recommendations. But our goal is to make a decision on those members for next year so that we can swear them in at the June meeting, and that way, they can work with us throughout the summer. So that's just an update on where we are with that. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Fallon. Next, we have Katie Sproul. Going to talk to us about math. With some help from Dawn.
I asked Dawn to come up with me because she's really been at the forefront of this. But, so we are excited to be able to provide you with information about our K-5 math curriculum adoption. Over the last several months, Dawn, the curriculum adoption team, teachers, students, specialists, our math intervention coordinator, or our math interventionists at each of the schools, have thoroughly reviewed various math curricula that the curriculum adoption team kind of figured out. They did a lot of pre-work to kind of make sure that the curriculum that they were reviewing was aligned with the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, and then also with our math vision as a county. Hashtag targeted, purposeful, specific. We tried to be with that. So, or I could do my way, but... So, just off the record, it should be "purposeful, specific, targeted." That would be a little bit more fun. But anyways, I digress. Feedback from the evaluation forms showed that Bridges in Mathematics is going to be our selected K-5 math curriculum. So we are really, really excited. It was overwhelmingly, like I would say, it was like 160 to 130 as far as the votes for it, and that was the alignment with the North Carolina Standard Course of Study and all of that. So that was a really exciting thing. And one of the other exciting pieces is we have the intervention piece already in our schools. And so this is just going to be the core curriculum that is now supplementing, or that is going to be where the Bridges intervention is going to be supplementing what the core is. And they're already familiar with that piece. So next year, implementation will be optional because we also understand that the plates of teachers is very full right now with a new ELA curriculum this year. But then, required implementation will be school year '25-'26. And we are encouraging teachers to at least do a piece of the curriculum next year, but it is not required, and it's going to be an opt-in. But professional learning will be provided to teachers all throughout next year regardless. So we are looking forward to helping our students create positive math experiences while also building problem-solving skills, conceptual understanding, and procedural fluency. So we're excited. And thank you to Dawn and the curriculum adoption team because truly, I mean, this work would not have been possible without them. So it's a team.
So, now we're looking at, we've got the ELA curriculum that's been in place, and our teachers just completed their training and letters training to get that in place. And now, we're going to roll out a K-5 math curriculum so that the teachers, the elementary teachers, have everything right at the tip of their fingers to work with our students and provide them all the resources they need.
Lot of back-to-back work.
Yeah.
It really is.
It's a team.
It is. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn?
Okay, so I'm up next. I'm very excited about Bridges in Mathematics and having a uniform curriculum across our county because right now, I think it's been since 2009, maybe, that we've had a curriculum. So we're looking forward to that so that we're all on the same page in all our schools and provide the same opportunities for all our students. So I'm here to talk about our compacted math curriculum for grades 6 through 8 tonight. Last year, we spent the summer, a group of teachers and myself revising our K-8 pacing guides so that we could refocus our teachers on our standards and be more targeted, specific, and purposeful in our instruction. Through that revision process, we realized that we weren't meeting the needs of our 6-8 students as far as the advanced-level mathematics that's required by the state. So right now, our students in middle school, if they receive a Level 5 on an EOG, then they are required to take an honors or advanced-level class in the next year, and that would lead to Math 1 in 8th grade. So what happens there in 8th grade is if a student takes Math 1 in 8th grade, they only take the Math 1 EOC and not the 8th-grade EOG. So we're concerned that students would miss some standards from the 8th-grade curriculum because that teacher's responsibility is to teach 8th grade and Math 1, and that's a lot. So we're revising the 6-8 curriculum so that in 6th grade, we do have an advanced level for students where they would have all of the 6th-grade standards and part of the 7th-grade standards. In 7th grade, they would have all of the, or, excuse me, the remaining 7th-grade standards and most of the 8th-grade standards so that in 8th grade, when they're placed in a Math 1 class, they will have Math 1 with a few of those remaining 8th-grade standards, which really support the Math 1 curriculum. So this way, all of the standards are taught in grades 6 through 8. And that's really important as students move on to high school because a lot of those 8th-grade standards that they may miss support Math II. So we want to make sure that those students have the foundation they need as they move into our high school mathematics classes. So we do have honors levels Math II and Math III available to make sure that we're in compliance with this legislation, and that leads to an AP Pre-Calculus class. And then, of course, we have AP Calculus and AP Statistics available for our students at that level. So any questions?
Just for clarification, in middle school, there is 6-, 7-, and 8th grade math where students used to be required to take an end-of-grade exam. If a student, when we moved Math 1 down to 8th grade, if a student was placed in Math 1 in the 8th grade, then they no longer took Math 8. But the state used to require them to have to take the Math EOG for 8th grade, even though they didn't take the class. And the curriculum for Math 8 and the curriculum for Math 1 are totally different. So what Dawn and her team have done is they've taken 6-, 7-, and 8th grade math, and they've condensed it down to being able to cover most of it in the 6th and 7th grade. So a student that gets on the Math 1 track to take Math 1 in 8th grade will only have to cover several standards in the 8th grade from Math 8.
Now, is Math 1 allowed to be a credit for high school?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So that's another credit that they'll allow to have at a high school level, taking it in the 8th grade.
And the idea is for those students to be on the path to take calculus as a senior so that, you know, that's what a lot of your colleges are looking for as far as the math requirement moving in as a freshman.
Right.
And students that opt to go to COA can take Math 171 or 172 and move on up in that math as well. So, again, options.
Right. That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Any other questions from any board member? Dawn, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you got me? Good evening, Board. Mr. Chairman. Wanted to give you a brief overview of our budget presentation process. And before I start, I want to sort of lay out the pathway that's gotten us to where I'm standing today. We reached out to our schools, and our principals reached out to their staffs and had their staff submit budget recommendations to them.
And then those budget recommendations went through our school improvement teams at the building level, and then to the principals. And the principals submitted those budget requests to our directors, who then reviewed the budget request and ultimately met, I think over a matter of several days, we met with each one of them to discuss budget from their particular areas and make recommendations for things that we wanted in our budget. So that's the pathway to where I'm standing today. But just to give you a little bit of background, again, just to reiterate so that everybody's aware, everything we do is going to run through our strategic goals. You hopefully are very aware of those at this point. We stress those all the time. We draw lines directly back to each of these goals when we're doing something. And I think you're going to see a lot of these goals reflected in what you see tonight. I want to start off tonight by talking about several of the budget challenges this year. Things that may be a little bit different this year that have sort of heightened the workability of the budget that we're going to put forward this spring. First of all, last fall in their budget, the state decided to do away with state planning allotments. And for some background, previously, the state would take a projection of where we were in the spring, and they would project where we would be in the fall based on our ADM, our Average Daily Membership. And that projection was what we used to do our planning for our budget the next year. And we would be able to take that data and provide that data to the county as to this is what the state says, this is where we're going to be population, student population-wise, next fall. Then we use that data to plan for how much money we're going to need in the fall to make recommendations to our county partners. In the event that the state overplanned, then in the fall, we would have to revert money back to the state. This fall in the state's budget, they did away with the planning allotment. And basically, they said, "We're directing you to plan for next year based on what your numbers are this year. And if you come up short, then we will backfill that amount of money." I likened it to Popeye, if y'all remember Wimpy on Popeye. "I'll gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today." And it sort of feels like that's where we are. We have to plan based on our numbers this year, and if they change pretty dramatically, we have to go back to the state and say, you know, "We need more money." Next, and one of the biggest hurdles that we're dealing with, and it's the cliff that's been coming for three years, is the end of federal ESAR funding. Oh, I get to say it too? Cool. Oh, awesome. That helps. Thank you. Is the end of federal ESAR funding. And ESAR funding is the funding that we got during the pandemic. That was ESAR 1, 2, and 3. The last one of those expires September 24, 2024. And basically, the thing that's created the biggest challenge for us this year is those ESAR funds that expired this year contained about 25 personnel positions. And that's been a real challenge. Just to let you know the kind of money we're talking about, on the charts, you can see in 2022, '23, it was a little over $2.6 million. '23, '24, $2.4 million. And 70% of those funds were used for personnel. We've done a lot of work with different departments and central office. Our federal programs person, which is another one of the hats that Katie Squirrel wears, has worked very diligently with Anna McGinnis on trying to cover several of those positions with our Title I funds. We've been able to do that in our Title I schools. There's four of those, so that's helped a lot. But what we're looking at right now is approximately eight positions that will go, that will cover our elementary and middle schools that we'll be able to cover for next year. Growth in programs. It would be nice when you budget money if everything stayed the same. That just doesn't happen. For example, this year, this current year, our dual-language program moved into the 5th grade in First Flight Elementary School. First Flight Elementary School got started a little bit behind all the rest of the elementary schools, so they're the last program to catch up. So we moved into the 5th grade, which is their last grade level before they'll move into First Flight Middle School next year. And also, our middle schools moved, our DLI program moved from 5th grade into 6th grade into our middle schools this year. That created an additional need of about $800,000 in funding to make those transitions to 5th grade and into the middle school. That was additional funding this year. We don't anticipate that funding for next year, but it was just something we had to cover because of the transitions for this year. Children with disabilities. I hope you're aware of this, but if you're not, and anyone that may be listening that isn't, the state of North Carolina funds 13% of our Average Daily Membership for students with disabilities. It doesn't matter what percentage of your population falls in the category of students with disabilities. The state funds 13%. In Dare County, we are 149 students above 13%. That's money that has to be funded locally. Folks, we do a really good job. And we have people from across the state of North Carolina that research the programs and the resources that Dare County provides for students with disabilities and move to Dare County so that their children can go to Dare County schools because of those programs. That's a challenge. Just to show you how quickly those numbers can change, in December '22, or January, starting in January '23, our number of students has increased by 37 students in that category. In 2021, '22, that was $4.3 million. This year, we will be at $5.8 billion. Number of substitutes that are being used. Went back and pulled this data today so that we'd have the most up-to-date data. In 21, '22, fiscal year '22, we had 4,266 daily jobs covered. That cost about $1 million. '23, '24, we had 4,828 daily jobs covered. That went, what, to $1.2 million? Now, several of those positions were long-term positions, and that adds a little bit to it because long-term positions are tended to pay, they're paid on their current salary or their previous salary before they retire as opposed to the daily substitute jobs. So if they're longer, if they're there longer, they get paid more money at a higher rate. Or if we're covering those substitute positions with teacher assistants, teachers assistants get paid more money to cover those jobs. In '22, '23, we had quite a few long-term subpositions, and that led to that $1.2 million. Currently, through the end of March, we're in April now, but through the end of March, we had already covered 4,556 substitute jobs. We've still got three months to go, and we're at $800,000. Those numbers are climbing, and that money gets paid out of local funds. Increased child nutrition costs. When we had ESAR money and we were carrying food all over Dare County and feeding as many kids as we could, those lunches were being paid for through those funds. Those funds are gone. Ideally, and I'll say this in the public forum that I'm standing in right now, ideally, every single student's lunch should be covered. And that, you pay for it. Kids eat. They have to eat. They have to be able to go to school and have breakfast and lunch to learn. So ideally, we would like to cover all that. We can't do that. And when that money expired, we currently have about $20,000 in unpaid student debt throughout the county. We have to pay for that. And that's, the alternative there is a student comes up and, you know, they've exceeded, or they have student debt and you tell them they can't have their lunch, and they're standing there with a tray. So we're putting some things in place to try to deal with that, but those funds have to be covered. Most likely, next year, we're going to have to raise our student lunch cost a little bit. We're going to be very careful with how they do that. But costs are going up in all areas, and that sort of gets me to our next thing because those things run together. Anything that we're purchasing, goods and services, from vendors, costs more money. Whether that's in the cafeteria, or whether that's in the maintenance department, or whether it's in transportation or resources for our classrooms, those prices are going up for the vendors, and they're in turn passing those costs along to us. So everything is costing more money. When we made a projection for how much this was going to cost, we're exceeding those projections in lots of areas. Teacher pay. And anytime we're talking about budget, it's going to come back to this, hopefully, at some point. Just to give you some numbers. In the fall of '23, state of North Carolina increased teacher pay an average of about 4%. That's going to move the starting teacher salary from $39,000. It would, and next year is projected to go to $41,000. So it's going to increase the starting teacher pay. But I want you to look at the other side of that screen. This is the range of salary increases with that average of 4%. And that average of 4% is over two years. So divided by two. A beginning teacher is going to receive a 5.1% increase. If you add the step increases, about 7.1%. A fifth-year teacher receives about 1.9%. 10-year teacher, 1.9%. A 15-year teacher, about 1.5%. And a teacher with 25 years' experience, about 1.5%. Translated into dollars, that's about $82 a month. And that's a pay raise. We're working very hard at the state and local level to try to improve teacher and staff compensation across the board. Currently, our local teacher supplement is $4,620. That's 48th in the state of North Carolina. Our classified employees are paid on the state rate with no local adjustment. We have been working locally with our representatives and our commissioners. We've been working at the state level with our representatives and our senators, and everybody knows where we stand. And so, you know, we're hoping in the future, in the near future, to see something change in those areas. To add another layer to that, we find out that our employer compensation or contribution to the state insurance fund is going to increase about 7.1%. In dollars, that's $8,000 a year per teacher. That's the local contribution. That's the employer contribution to insurance. We don't have the numbers for family insurance yet from the state, but what we know is what we're going to have to pay. And when you're looking at $8,000 a year per employee, that's a significant amount of money. Recruitment and retention. Our board has graciously put together a committee that meets and has been meeting to look at the things that we can be doing at the local level to try to enhance our employees, meeting with our commissioners and having the same discussions, getting input from the public to try to create areas where we can make it a little easier on our employees to be able to do things here in Dare County, to compete with other counties, to hire those same individuals that are looking for positions. Now, those are the challenges. And I'm not dare going to give you the challenges without giving the reasons. First and foremost, our staff. Folks, as I stand here today, our staff's tremendous. Top to bottom, our people are some of the best you're ever going to work with in education. And I put on here their concern and commitment to our students and our schools is extraordinary. You see that every day. I thank you for going to our schools because you see that. There's no way that you can walk into a school in Dare County and not see what the employees are doing for the students in Dare County. We have approximately 500 certified staff members. Those are staff members with degrees. And an additional 300 classified staff members in Dare County schools that are working to make things better for all of us. Our students, our 5,000, give or take, students, and their growth. Now, some of this data you're going to see tonight is data that we compiled last fall from our most recent testing. Some of the data you're going to see tonight is brand-new, and I'm thrilled to share some of that. But when you look at data like this, folks, this is our district average student growth. That's impressive. As long as those bars keep going up, we're doing something right. I was thrilled at the highlights that y'all gave tonight because one of the things that I talked about when I first got here was, you know, Dare County Schools Athletic Department are phenomenal. Going to talk a little bit about that in just a minute. But our academic departments are equally phenomenal. And there are academic competitions all over North Carolina and our region where our students should be competing because they're going to do really well. Well, we have made a concerted effort to provide funding to our schools so that our students can go to those competitions and encouraged our teachers to take our students to those competitions. And those math numbers that y'all shared a while ago, they're fantastic. I loved it. I got to go to the renewable energy competition at CSI the afternoon they had that. And First Flight Middle and First Flight High School took first in both of their divisions. That's fantastic. And they're competing against teams from across the state. We just need more of our schools competing because they're going to do well. These numbers are numbers I shared with you last fall in comparison to how we're performing in northeast North Carolina and against the entire state of North Carolina. These are classes or courses that we showed improvement in just last year over the previous year. And then we celebrated each individual school and some of the numbers that they were posting. This is new data. We just got this data, and I am thrilled to stand here in front of you because this was something else that very early on, we said, "We're going to make a difference here." We just received our ACT numbers last, end of last week. Couple of years ago, the University of North Carolina system, which consists of 17 schools, UNC Chapel Hill, as well as NC State, East Carolina, Appalachian State, Pembroke, Wilmington, all the 17 schools in the University of North Carolina system has a cutoff, a minimum requirement. Two years ago, that was 17. And the UNC system decided to raise it to 19. And with an ACT test, the max score is 36. So when you increase by two points, you're moving the bar. Well, for the first time in any data that we have uncovered in Dare County schools, this spring, all three of our high schools exceeded the average of 19. And we've not seen any data anywhere that that's happened before. And that's fantastic. And if you look at Cape Hatteras, remember I said moving from 17 to 19? Um, and if you look at Cape Hatteras, uh, remember I said moving from 17 to 19, they increased their average score by 1.6 points. That's big. Early childhood programs, you heard a little bit about this earlier. Um, our, our new pre-K class at Kitty Hawk Elementary School, uh, just received a five-star licensure rating. That is tremendous. Uh, our pathway to school readiness, uh, which is the program that they started uh, at, at our regions, um, but Manio, First Flight Elementary and Cape Hatteras. Um, basically what that is, is a night uh, for, for parents of students that are between uh, two and five years old, to be able to come into our schools and look at what we're asking students to be able to do when they get to pre-K, when they get to kindergarten. But it also allows our daycare providers, the opportunity to come into our schools and look at what students are going to have to do when they transition from daycare to pre-K or to kindergarten. Um, I, I was at the Manio Elementary Night. Um, I think we had over a hundred families show up at, at each of those nights. That, that's huge. That's providing a resource to our community that says, you know, we're not going to wait until you get to kindergarten. We want you to know, we want you to be ready when you get there. Um, that's, that's extending school. This is what we were talking about. Our musicians, our arts programs, um, we, we've, we've reached out to our schools and said, you know, send these kids off and, and you guys highlighted some of the things a while ago. Our kids don't just go to competitions, folks. They excel in these competitions. They're recognized statewide um, for what they do and they deserve to have an opportunity to go out and showcase their talents. And I'm thrilled that we've been able to provide those opportunities to them and we're, we're, we're increasing those opportunities, both academically as well as in the arts. I like this one too. State championship's pretty cool, y'all. Um, we've got kids in Dare County schools that are, that are regularly competing at the highest level. Um, and, and it's not just in athletics, it's in everything that they're doing. And this is the reason why. Because we, we have equally as extraordinary staff members that are leading these kids and they are being recognized um, locally, regionally, statewide, nationally, uh, presenting at national conferences, uh, being asked to present at national conferences. Um, that, that's, that's pretty impressive. When I first arrived in Dare County, um, there was a lot of talk about early college. And one of the first things I heard was, you just want everybody to go to four-year college? And I said, no, that's not true. As a matter of fact, I sat down with Dr. Castillo and I said, why aren't our kids excelling or enrolling in the CTE classes? Well, the ones that were there are doing well. Why aren't more? She said, I don't know. I said, well, let's make it happen. And that's exactly what she's done. That's last year's enrollment figure. She was so thrilled about those enrollment figures that she's been tracking it ever since and she actually has these charts in her office. It's sort of, sort of like the barometer goes up, you know? You walk in the office, I walk in, I look at the colors and see how far they've gone up, um, to see where they are. Industry credentials earned. This is, this is, when, when someone tells you, we, we need to teach hands-on um, experience in schools or we're not teaching carpentry or we're not teaching, tell them we are. Tell them that's what's going on. These credentials, these are kids that complete classes that they're awarded industry regulated credentials that says you're qualified to do this. So when they go out in the community, they're competing against the adult workforce because they have the credential and they got that credential in school. We just had the First Flight High School junior chefs compete in the state championship. They did a tremendous job. They had to prepare a student lunch that met all the requirements, the federal requirements. Um, and y'all, it was delicious. I mean, it was fan, I, I don't remember student lunch being like that. Um, they did a tremendous job. So what are we teaching kids? Well, let's see. What do people in Dare County do? Uh, we're tourist oriented, we're fishing oriented, um, and we're the birthplace of flight. So what are we teaching kids? Well, you heard that last month about the school, Lee, about the bus that they're converting into an RV at Cape Hatters. Um, you've heard about First Flight High School building an airplane and now we're going to expand into Manio High School and they're going to start boat building. And, and I, I joke with Shannon all the time, I want a bigger boat. Um, but they say we had to start with this boat, so we'll start with this boat, but we're wanting a bigger boat. Um, but we're go, we're going to build a boat in partnership with our local boat building industries, right here in Dare County, um, on the Manio High School campus in the carpentry shop. It's going to be part of Carpentry 3. What are we teaching our kids? We're teaching our kids to be successful. Another thing that's been talked about quite a bit, and that's the number of Dare County students that are enrolled at COA. In the past, we've had a lot of students that took online learning when we had this beautiful College of Alabama Dare Campus sitting right here in front of us. Well, we want those kids taking classes on that campus. And I can tell you right now, uh, we are in the middle of enrollment for next year and our numbers for Dare County School students taking COA classes are climbing. And we're very pleased, uh, I hope to have those numbers, uh, something a little more solid to you before the end of the school year. Um, but we're going to have more kids on campus taking college classes. Hiring and staffing. This is the beginning of the year. Did a lot of work last summer. Staff worked very hard to fill a lot of those positions, did a tremendous job. Dare County Board, uh, has gone out of their way, um, to, to find ways to attract and to keep, um, more of our staff. Um, we call it the recruitment and retention committee. Um, you know, it's one thing to hire somebody, but if they don't stay here any length of time, you have to turn right back around and find somebody else to hire. So you not only have to attract people to come here and work in this tremendous school system, but then you have to do things that make it um, livable in Dare County, that make it affordable in Dare County for them to be able to stay here, um, to continue to do, uh, and meet the level of expectation that we have for Dare County schools. And that's what we're working toward and that's what the board is working toward with that committee. Very proud of our school nutrition programs. Uh, last year, we created a, an incentive program for our cafeteria workers, um, tied to their attendance. Um, the, the better their attendance, uh, the more money they made. Um, they got a little bonus for their attendance. Do the same thing with our bus drivers, trying to create incentives for our staff. The child nutrition program will also, school nutrition program will also hold, uh, professional development for all the District One schools again in Dare County. Um, I believe it's April 20th, Saturday, April 20th, uh, they'll, they'll be holding that again. So we're very honored to do this and they work very closely with our junior chefs in the state competition. Director Khalid Godovan does a great job with that. And then finally, our Darrowly College, uh, we're meeting with the county right now as far as the planning, um, about exactly where that college is going to be, what it's going to look like. Uh, we have some preliminary drawings, had a, a meeting last week and we've got another one coming up tomorrow morning, uh, to look at some of the renderings of what that building may look like and where it's going to be locally located. Um, haven't received anything back from legislature. I, I was actually on the phone with, um, Senator Hannig a couple of days ago, um, and we'll be traveling to Raleigh the end of this month, uh, to talk to some of our representatives and senators about the plans for early college and try to make sure that moves along. Uh, but we're, we're thrilled about the prospects and, and I greatly appreciate the support of the board, um, in that. Uh, I will go back and say one thing again, um, I've said this several times, but I want to make sure everybody understands it. Um, the, the county has been tremendously gracious in affording us funding, uh, to be able to build that facility. Um, they've set aside $25 million to cover the cost of building that facility. The money that they set aside comes from the state education lottery. That money can only be used for school construction. It cannot be used to raise salaries or pay supplements. So it's been sitting there in a pot, waiting for school construction. Luckily, we hadn't had to build a lot of schools. Um, and for them to be able to for, uh, afford to, to allow us to use, I think it's 21 million of that 25 million dollars is just tremendous. And I really want to thank our commissioners for, for doing that, um, and making that, those funds available to us, um, to be able to pursue that. And then finally, here's our belief and, and I say this to you all the time. It's about kids, y'all. It's about, it's about students. It's about doing what's best for students all the time and providing the resources and the staff and the expertise to continue to produce the results in Dare County that we're capable of producing. We're continuing to raise the bar and our expectation is going to continue to be that we'll always meet it.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. I appreciate the, uh, the report and, um, as everyone know, that we will be having a budget workshop, um, Tuesday, April 30th at Central Office at 2:30. So, um, it looks like we'll be getting paperwork here now. Gives us plenty of time to review it and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to Mr. Bassnight, um, prior to our, our workshop on the 30th. And also I'd like to, uh, thank our finance department, Ms. Anna McGinnis and her team, um, for the work that they've, uh, done to allow Mr. Bassnight to give us a presentation tonight because it certainly did take the whole team, um, to make that work and it was a great presentation and looking forward to, to read through this and, um, certainly go forward on our budget workshop on the 30th. Anna, please share that and Mr. Bassnight with the finance department.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please.
Um, our staff at Central Office, um, is, is as good a group of individuals as I've ever worked with in education. Um, they are all motivated by doing what's best for kids and supporting our staff and they do it every day and they work very hard at it. Um, and, and they work well together and, um, it's a, it's a joy to go to work every day with the people that I get to work with and I, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is our unfinished business and I'll turn the, the meeting over to our school board attorney, Ms. Hitch.
Thank you so much. So what I have here are some policies for second reading, just to remind the board what the process has been. These policies have already been through the policy committee. Were recommended to you on first reading and I didn't get any questions or comments for edits or amendments, so you're getting them now for second reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion on the floor to, to approve, uh, the second readings of proposed policy? It's presented.
We have a motion on the floor, but Mr. Payne, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Bothwell? Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries? Ms. Hitch, it's back up to you again.
Yes, sir. So these policies are policies that are before the board for first reading. These policies have also been through the policy committee and these are, are the policies as amended by the policy committee that are being recommended to you for first reading. So if anyone has any questions or concerns or things that they want to talk about in the interim, just let me know if you've got any questions on these policies and we can address that before second reading.
Okay, thank you. Next on our item is new business and I'd like to call Mr. Ian Adams, our director of facility forward to present the Dare County Schools Capital Improvement Plan for 24, 25 through 28, 29.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board, Minister Superintendent. Pull up my, uh... All right. More budget stuff, uh, the part I enjoy. Actually, I like it all, but, uh, the Board of Education provides a capital improvement, excuse me, plan each year for submission to the Board of Commissioners for funding consideration. Uh, beginning in 2015, 2016, the format of the CIP was restructured to more closely align with the classifications provided from the county and no longer includes items that are now classified as capital outline. Items in this category will be included in the proposed annual budget, which y'all just received for fiscal year 24, 25. After several meetings with staff and using guidelines provided by Dare County, staff composed a list of projects that qualified for CIP funding. CIP team met on February 5th, 2024 and March 26th, 2024 to review the proposed projects and related scheduling. Following discussions and input from the CIP team, a draft has been developed that reflects this plan as, uh, excuse me, district needs over the next five-year period. Because this plan is a fluid document, the focus is on the projects needed next year and the items identified in subsequent four years represent our best projections at the time. Believe y'all had a chance to look at it and I kind of, I'll go through next years a little bit line by line and then I'm sure everybody has questions about a couple of years out when I have some more, uh, growth expectations.
Excuse me, Ian. Aaron, do you have that on, that's the, do you have that on the computer for us to look at? Cause what's showing up now? You don't have that?
You ready? All right. First item is First Flight High School, uh, roof replacement. That number came down a little bit from previous years because of a product that I found seems to be a little more fitting for our environment in a few counties or a few districts in the coastal area. I've used it and I've gone and looked at it and we're going to go with it. And it comes with a 10 or 20-year, uh, warranty. So it was a little bit of a cost savings there projected from last year. Say again? It is a polyurethane spray-on roof. So the warranty changes based on its thickness. So we get into, I think they even have a longer warranty, but we're talking, uh, a very thick, 10 or 20 years. I believe the price I got was a 20-year. Yep, for First Flight High School, that is a, uh, parapet wall around most of that building. So you can't even see the surface of the roof from, unless you're up there with me. Uh, the next one is of course some section siding replacement, paint for First Flight High School. A smart siding is very great, but it doesn't like to be here to paint and staining and all of that. So we're going to take care of a big section of that. We do have a chiller, uh, that's not a typo, it is a R-NUL. That is a, a train trademarked word and we'll have to rebuild that chiller pump, uh, to stay within our warranty parameters. Fall out of warranty though, they won't take care of it anymore or maintain it for us. HAAC riser repairs, since we've done so many upgrades at the school over the past couple of years, we'll go back and we'll basically recommission the building, balance everything out. Uh, First Flight Elementary School, we are replacing one air handler this year, uh, 195 to replace its counterpart next year. Gym floor renovations at Manio High School, uh, they do still have the hardwood floor, so we're going to go and resurface, fix any, uh, weak spots. A big one is Manio High School chiller replacements. There are two large chillers that provide cooling capacity for 90% of the school are seriously dilapidated, so we're going to have to replace both for the same year and we are seeing some cost savings there as opposed to breaking it out each year. Each year they would have to do a new, uh, travel cost and rental cost and everything. So we're saving about 180 to 200,000 dollars by combining the two and making them, uh, one job. saving about $180,000 to $200,000 by combining the two and making them one job. We are pulling some funding for that. You see the asterisks there to help cover the cost. A little higher than expected with all sheet metal and crane costs are through the roof right now, as Mr. Bassnight spoke on earlier, the skyrocketing, rocketing costs. Manio Elementary is gym floor replacement, $90,000. That gym is in the old, original section of the building. I spoke to the gym teacher a couple of weeks ago. It's rippled, the kids fall, trip, just way past due for replacing that. We did Hatteras High School Secondary, excuse me, earlier this year for 110, so I think 90 is a safe overshot with the cost of chemicals and plastic. Chemicals maybe not the right word, but it is chemical-based or petroleum-based surface that will go on there. We have two fuel tanks within the district for our fuel oil, for either boilers or hot water systems. They will be replaced with $75,000, and we'll do another set of playground equipment, ending the cycle and taking care of some few more pieces again. Originally, that was a great plan with the $90,000 for five years, but it came a little short these last couple of years with skyrocketing costs. So when we bring that back in a couple of years, we'll double, hopefully, and that way we can get more, if not the same, the same if not more, equipment.
One of the issues that came up the other day when we were discussing this is the cost of playground equipment. When that, the amount of money was allocated, you pretty much could replace most of the playground for $90,000, and now you can probably get something to put on the playground for $90,000. I mean, it's just amazing.
For reference, the one piece that we are waiting on to replace, a piece at Hatteras Elementary, was $65,000, just one piece.
In the last few years, we've done some upgrade at each elementary school other than Kitty Hawk because they have a bigger plan for their self, for their...
Correct.
Equipment, yes.
Yep, so this is kind of the tail end of a five-year, $90,000 step to cover the elementary schools. We did come across some ESSER funding last year that kind of squeaked out to get some coutrements, some seats and chains and whatnot. But yes, I try to squeeze every penny out of that as I can, especially when it comes to that.
Sure.
Guess the big thing on the list is '26, '27, which is my plan of where we need to be or what we need there. It was really just to get it out there so we're all on the same page. Mrs. McGinnis, Mr. Clausen, you know, the financial gurus can sit there and think about how we can start funding this. My dream is the 29 million. That's not a reality, I'm sure, to be honest about it, and I will go through and prioritize each of those. And here today, my two highest priorities are Cape Hatteras Secondary's cafeteria, lunchroom, and First Flight High School expansion of auxiliary gym slash classroom addition.
Can Cape Hatteras Secondary wait that long, that cafeteria? Because that cafeteria is in really bad shape.
I believe so. The biggest issue is the flooring, which we can keep together for the next two years. It's not like it's falling off. It's every house on the beach. I mean, the sand moves, they have cracks. We fill them properly, but if we go much longer than two years, we're going to have just a completely glued-together floor, more or less. But we're doing fine. We're keeping it there. It's not falling away. We're just getting some settlement cracks as a 60-year-old building.
It's like a roller coaster.
Yes.
When you walk in there.
Ian, is there any way that you could move some of that '26, '27 back to '25, '26, or move it up to '27, '28?
Possibly. So that's where the discussion comes in, between the early college, how funding has worked for the bonds that were issued originally back in 2007. Kind of some of that old issued debt is falling off, and we would like to go into issuing new debt or another means, lottery money, not necessarily bond issuance, but, you know, ways of freeing up capital there, that they're not paying those bond payments anymore. And the trick with a lot of the capital projects is we can start it, let's say this year, '24. We wouldn't have our first payment until '25, depending on the funding source. So we can start some early if we just set the... We need to know, we need to set that money aside or have it built into our system by then.
Yeah, that's a huge chunk for...
Yeah. The county manager and I, and Anna and Dave Clausen are in conversations, and we're working with Ian right now on a prioritized list of '26, '27. And the way we shared that was, we want you to know, you know, what's out there and what we're looking at, and now we'll sit down and do some soul-searching about what has to happen and what needs to take place sooner as opposed to later, and start narrowing that down. But instead of waiting until then to say, surprise, you know, we tried to put it all on the paper so that everybody's looking at the same thing.
I mean, right now, our newest facility is over 20 years old. So it is, you got to keep maintaining what we have. We just can't let it fall down.
Well, and as you can see, next year, the majority of things you're looking at is heating and air. And if you own a home or rent a home on the Outer Banks, you're going to replace your heating and air unit. If you can get four years out of it, that works well. School systems are the same way. They're just bigger.
Special motion, probably.
And that is one thing I'm preparing for the county now, is just an explanation of what I would like to see with the money I set up.
And that's good to do.
Yeah. These numbers are, you know, I worked with an architect, and he gave me the inland price per square foot, and then he sent me the Outer Banks price per square foot, and it's kind of what we base those numbers off of.
And Ian's done projections on some of this stuff that we, you know, we thought were solid numbers, but then when we go back to suppliers, the cost of putting those things together has gone up tremendously, and all of a sudden, our numbers aren't touching what it's going to cost.
You go back to those chillers that we originally thought would fall into the 60, 100,000 range three years ago, for 1.1 million now.
Any other questions from any other board member?
Question. Manio High School Field House, I think been on the books for probably three years and keeps getting pushed down or later.
Yep. I knowingly and intentionally pushed that back this year. So with our renovation of the fieldhouse as it is, the locker room, so we pushed it back to next year to really capture what the need is. I constantly hear wants and desires and what ifs, and so this summer and this fall coming up will be a true dive into what do they need? Not necessarily wants, I mean, and I've heard five different stories because this money was set aside long before I got here. I heard fieldhouse, I heard press box, I heard restrooms, so...
We've heard all three of those.
Yeah. We've got a pretty good relationship with a set of architects, which I had planned on eventually issuing a master agreement, so they will be our architect, and they will provide us more information into what we can, can't do, what will be best suited, and then, of course, sitting down with Mr. Luciano, Alfie Wheeler, Mr. Metzinger, to see what they really need to make it happen.
My goal would be to start that planning now so that maybe in next year, you'll be able to start building a lot quick, because I don't know if you can have some money for that planning process this year or this upcoming year to get things rolling with the major build the next year.
Absolutely.
That's my thought.
Absolutely. And that's kind of where I am now with kind of pushing it back and really getting to rethink what needs to be done.
Personally, if it was me, that whole stand there needs to be rebuilt.
Yeah, $400,000 won't do that.
Oh, I know. That's all right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. It's very unsightly when you walk into the football or the soccer facility and you see Porter Johns along there. That just don't look very nice.
Absolutely. I will agree that it's been left untouched for too long.
Yep, it certainly has.
We will get it fixed.
Any other questions from any other board member? Ian, I'd like to thank you and the team for reaching out for those meetings and having that discussion and bringing it back to us, so thank you so much.
Absolutely.
So with that being said, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the capital improvement plan that's been presented by Mr. Ian for '24, '25 to '28, '29 that's been presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that... We introduce that for a vote?
We have a motion by Mr. Brow. Have a second? By Mr. Wicker. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? No. Motion carries. So, thank you, Ian.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't go far, Ian.
Don't go far. You're back on the list, buddy.
Yes.
So Mr. Ian's here this evening to talk about some solar grant.
Last year, we received a grant to install solar systems, solar panel systems at three schools. That was later revised to five schools. It was 20-kilowatt systems. Those were for First Flight High School, oh, excuse me, First Flight Elementary, Manio Middle School, Manio High School, Cape Hatteras Elementary, and Cape Hatteras Secondary. Earlier this year, diving into the studies, we pulled financial statements, ran numbers on what those systems could get to see if it was advantageous. NC Solar, NC Green Power Solar now did their own. I did mine as well, and it came back, that First Flight Elementary School and Manio Middle School. Were not advantageous with what Dominion would let us hook into financially. The actual contractor came up with the idea of Haven Picnic Tables, which I attached a spec sheet to the agenda meeting minutes, excuse me. I think it is a great option. It'll be a little more forefront. They'll actually be able to use it. I mean, this grant was intended for this system to be educational, not just a cost saving for the district, but for students to be engaged about solar power. These Haven Picnic Tables are full canopy picnic tables. They do have a solid surface countertop on them, and they're recycled lumber for the seats, or not lumber, excuse me, plastic. So they will withhold the beach. They are hurricane-rated, and that's what a lot of people like to say. They can use, they do have receptacles across the top and middle. They can be used to power devices. They do have two wireless connections on them, and we plan on putting them, one of the sites I have to review, but you know, Manio Middle School, putting it out front so the students or teachers can use it in the morning, they can hold classrooms, and they can learn how solar panels work.
Any question for Mr. Adams?
How many were you thinking we have to do?
Two schools, one apiece. Yeah, they are quite expensive. Again, we aren't touching any of the funds. NC Green Power was buying the solar systems to put them at our schools with their contractor, sort of not moving any money, the contractors now, instead of installing solar panels and installing these picnic tables. And they will anchor them. The sites we have been looking at have been over concrete, so we'll anchor them down. We don't want them flying away.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a recommendation. I recommend the board approve the request to use the grant from NC Green Power Solar Plus Schools for the installation of Haven Picnic Tables at First Flight Elementary and Manio Middle School instead of the installation of solar panels, and authorize the staff to sign a revised agreement that legal counsel has reviewed with NC Green Power Solar Schools to change the use of that grant.
Mr. Bassnight has requested this to come to a motion to the floor, to the board. Do I have a motion on the floor? A motion by Ms. Bothwell? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Woody? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? Motion carries. Sounds good, Ian. Looks like you'll be able to...
What's the cost on one of those tables?
I haven't seen a manufacturer cost. I know the contractor cost, and that's not necessarily a decent number. I can get that for you, though.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Thanks, Ian.
Next, I'd like to call Ms. Fallon.
I'm excited to be here tonight on behalf of Manio Middle School. As mentioned in the announcements from our students, Manio Middle School Trailblazer Club, no, I don't know that that's their name. Anyway, they've received a $10,000 grant for to do a fishing club for next year at Manio Middle School, and I, doesn't that sound great after all that money talk? Let's go fishing. But anyway, they're going to use that money. They're going to make lures and learn about fishing and fish behaviors and habitats, and then they're going to go fishing. So we just need to accept that grant money so we can start spending it. So, Mr. Bassnight.
Any questions from Ms. Fallon from the board? So do I have a motion on the floor to accept the grant?
Yeah, motion to accept the grant.
Mr. Payne, a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? Motion carries.
I will let those kids know. Y'all have made lots of kids happy.
Let's go fishing. Next, we'll have Ms. Katie Spruill and Ms. Fallon back up here under our new business.
All right, Aaron, I broke it. It wants me to input some kind of number. There we go. Awesome. Board, we want to take a few minutes of your time tonight to talk to you about targeted support. It's a program from the state for programs that don't achieve growth and proficiency measures, and we've got three areas, same area, three different schools in Dare County that we want to talk to you a little bit about. Dare County has been notified that we have three schools that did not make growth in one specific area. Those schools are Manio Elementary, Manio Middle, and Cape Hatteras Secondary. Now, the data for which each of those schools did not make that cutoff is a little different because the data for Manio Elementary School goes back to 2017, '18, and that's what they base, the fact that they didn't make growth in the area of students with disabilities. The data for Manio Middle School and Cape Hatteras Secondary School is from 2021, '22, but it's the same group, students with disabilities. Please, jump.
So the big difference there is Manio Elementary, while they were identified based on the 2017, 2018 data, that the reason they are still identified is they have not met their, that subgroup has not met the growth criteria since then. The other two were just identified in 21, '22, so that was the first time that that subgroup had not met growth criteria based on the EOCs, EOGs.
And that may make a difference into next year and the following year. Talk about that in just a second. Here's the criteria. I won't read all that to you, but under the bullet, that's the criteria for that subgroup. This is the Manio Middle Cape Hatteras group. Essentially, the area of students with disabilities did not make at least a D. Okay, as a result, they are required by the state to include two indicators in their school improvement plans. Those indicators are A401, school implements a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned with the individual needs of students assessed across all tiers. And D102, the LEA school has aligned resources allocation, money, time, human resources within each of the school's instruction priorities. Both of those have to be in their school improvement plans. We have gone back to each of the school improvement plans for those three schools and made sure they included those two indicators in their school plans. And tonight, we're going to request that you approve their revised school improvement plans. Do you want to talk about this?
Sure.
To get out of this designation... To get out of, of this designation, and that's where I was telling you all ago, there's some things that they have to do as well.
So while they were identified, there are certain things they have to do to exit. So they have to achieve a, so it's not all of them, it's one of them. Okay, so if they hit one of these, they would exit. So it's an achieving a three-year growth index of 1.0 or higher. So it would be taking the three years and averaging them. And so that would be based on 21, 22, 22, 23, and then 23, 24. And then the next one would be are on track to meet the subgroup's 12-year proficiency goals in reading and math. That one's a little tougher because they, so if they don't meet the first one, they won't meet that one. Does that make sense? Because that would be, they're not, they would not be meeting that. Their group no longer exists. So there's not, there's not enough students at the schools to create a subgroup of students with disabilities. And then the last one is to improve their school performance grade score for that identified subgroup to a D. And so right now, all three of those schools are at an F right now for that subgroup. But the other two, or Manio Elementary was there first and then the other two were there, were just identified in 21, 22. Or based on 21, 22 data.
And for your reference, now, keep in mind, Manio Elementary as, as an entire school had a 4.0 growth number last year. So it's just this group. It's not the entire school.
Yes.
Okay, as a result of the process, these are the things that Manio Elementary School is already doing to try to meet the designation to exit TSI. And these are specific to Manio Elementary. Principal Curtis Price and Katie have been working on this list. We have one of those for each of the schools. These are the things that Manio Middle's doing to exit TSI. And this is Cape Hatters Secondary School. Again, all of these go back to their NC Star School Improvement Plan. That's where the indicators come from. And they specifically have to target those indicators, assign a staff member who's responsible for the indicator, and then follow through in their school improvement meetings on, on how that indicator's going. So we're asking you tonight to, to approve the revised school improvement plans for these three schools.
Mr. Bassnight, go back one. I might have missed it. What is WICOR?
Wicker. Those are avid principals.
Okay, right.
And to translate, Wicker, the old school is like writing and reading across the curriculum. So you do it in every content area. It's, it's very strategic and formulaic. And good stuff.
Any, any questions for the team out there?
Can I just make a comment real quick?
Please do.
One thing I will say is this kind of information can kind of put a damper on things. But one thing I can tell you is that all three of our schools, we were, they were doing great things and they just had to add tweak a couple of things, right? And so they aren't upending everything they're doing, the teachers, the, the, all of the staff, the instructional staff, people at central office where, you know, we're, we're doing the right things. And so it's just kind of like a, this is a formality at this point, but it's, we're not really adjusting a ton of what we already had planned for the year. Does that make sense? You know, we are still going to tweak some things, but it's just our, our schools and our teams are working really, really hard. And I don't want this to be, you know, a negative mark on them because I truly believe that we are making a difference in kids' lives. And this is just a way to kind of reroute us a little bit in a, in a way, but it's not saying that we're not doing good things. So I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Right.
I'm glad.
It's catchy.
Purposeful, specific, targeted.
Okay, nothing from the board. Do I have a motion on the floor to accept this, this plan? For the three schools, Cape Hatters Secondary, Manio Elementary and Manio Middle. Motion by Ms. Bothwell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Aye carries. Thank you. Thank y'all for the work. This concludes the business portion of our meeting. I'd like now to, to open the floor to comments from the board and student advisories. Ms. Anna, would you like to start us out? Isabel's behind the corner. I don't even, I don't even, there she is. I didn't know if you were taking a nap or not.
Oh my goodness. I just first want to comment on Dr. Leah Lane's Coach's Mental Health First Aid Professional Development. As a student athlete myself, I can definitely attest to the fact that mental sports play a huge role in student athletes' mental health. And I think that teaching coaches to recognize that and be equipped to handle it is super important. So I really appreciate that program being developed here. I also just want to say from Superintendent Bassnight's budget presentation, it's super nice to see the statistics of how Dare County is improving. And it makes me super excited to see what's in store for Dare County in the future. So yeah, thank you.
Second, everything Anna said, I do want to also thank Superintendent Bassnight for the proposed budget presentation. Thought that was very eye-opening. And just to hear that, everything that, like the financial stuff and all of that. When he walked up, he said, don't fall asleep. But I, I didn't fall asleep because that was actually, I was, I was wide awake and listening to every moment of that. To reiterate what he said, the staff that, in Dare County is amazing. I've been going to Dare, Cape Hatters Elementary School and High School since I was in pre-k. And it's just the most amazing people. I still see my pre-k teacher all the time when I go in there and she's, she hugs me and smiles at me and tells me that I'm so grown up. And it's just that the staff is just amazing. Even in like the CTE programs with Mr. Moore and Ms. Suzanne at Cape Hatters and Mr. McCroskey in the arts program, it's just so amazing. Just such an amazing staff. Grateful to be a student here. Thank you.
I'm also very grateful to be a student here. I just want to thank you all for all the opportunities that you give us as students. And I think we're in a really special school district and we have accomplishments to show for that as students. And we definitely don't take the, all the opportunities that you guys give us for granted. And I know I appreciate the opportunities I've been given to win awards and compete at events. And I can also speak for all of Manio and the rest of the district saying that us three are not the only, that only students in the district that are grateful for those opportunities. So thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brower?
Thank you. I, I had the opportunity to go, First Flight High School, Stagecraft's production. I got to see their production of Mean Girls, the musical. And it was amazing. They, they broke some attendance records. One for the three-day run. And they also broke another one for a single sitting. Turned around a few weeks later, a couple of weeks later, got to see the International Thesbian Society's induction ceremony. It's an honor society for theater arts. So six, there were six new students put into that. And obviously, they were all involved with, with Mean Girls as well. And, and Anna brought it up about the Albemarle Band Clinic. I was there too. And the Albemarle Band Clinics, pretty much every school in the Albemarle region sends, you know, some of their best kids. And they go through a weekend-long clinic and it's pretty intense. They spend several hours around, actually, I think it's seven or eight hours over, over the course of, you know, two days. And then they put on a performance. And these kids have never played together before, anything like that. All those schools, I think we're very well represented from Manio, from, from Hatters and also from First Flight. You know, usually it's kind of hit and miss at band things, for me at least. And these kids just sounded fantastic.
Awesome.
That's all I have.
Mr. Wicker?
I'd just like to, a lot of good things going on. It seems like more and more, or good things are going on. Just like to thank all the staff and teachers for all the hard work that they do.
Ms. Bothwell?
Yeah, I've loved seeing all the staff. When they come, every meeting, you guys are the best, truly the best. And I think one of the best things we ever did was get the student representatives. You guys rock. And I've, sorry. I, I have seen such growth in all three of you girls in such a short period of time. I'm very impressed.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
I want to go back to the Mean Girls presentation at First Flight High School. I do, I do some part-time work with the after-school kids at KDH Recreation Center. And there's several middle school students that were in that play. And you can see them at the after-school gymnasium doing one thing. And then when, once they step on the stage, they're amazing. As a high school principal, teacher, assistant principal, I've seen a lot of school plays. This was very, very good. And those kids, like athletes, when they step on the field, they step up on the stage and they just do amazing work. So that was a lot of fun. Looking forward to seeing the Cape Hatters presentation also. Want to say congratulations to Mr. Wallen for, for his doctorate. That's a ton of work and trying to do it while you're working full-time. It's not an easy task. So hats off to, I guess it's Dr. Duke Wallen now. Yes, congratulations. I'm excited about the kindergarten kickoff with Ms. Spruill coming up. And I'm glad to see that COA numbers for our graduates are increasing. I've been talking about that at every board meeting. So graduates, take a look at COA. And for not only academics, but for CTE also. Thank you.
Mr. Woody?
Yeah, well, I'm excited for Dare County. There's a lot of great things happening. I mean, boat building, airplanes. What was the third one? Bus. Bus, bus, the bus. Yeah, that's exciting. Schooly, yeah. So there's a lot of, a lot of great things that are happening in Dare County schools. So I mean, it's a big thanks to everybody that works for the schools because if it wasn't for them, it wouldn't happen.
Thank you. I've got to echo, we have the best staff and, and I just appreciate all their work and dedication. I shared this past week with the student advisory committee with Mr. Bassnight. And I shared with the students that not only the hours that a teacher puts in that classroom to teach those kids, to teach you each and every day, they put so many more hours after the work. It's the, when you say you go, you go home and you have homework, they have homework as well. And when they do their homework well, it reflects on your day-to-day classroom work. And it shows how good we're doing statistically, not just our region, but at our state level. And I want to commend again, Mr. Bassnight and Ms. Anna McGinnis in the finance, giving us a presentation and not showing us just numbers and going through the basics. And this is what, being what we want, what we need. It shows the documentation of pictures of our staff and our students utilizing the funds that are presented to us by our grateful county commissioner and a little bit from the state and the federal. But our county commissioners and it just shows that, you know, we are putting the money where it needs to be put. And the outcome, these three young ladies here tonight, and it has been showing for the last year, coming to each meeting and presenting and giving us updates on our, on our schools. And it just, just means a lot. It really does. And with that being said, yes, sir.
One last thing, want to make sure to notify the board and, and the public as well. Our spring air quality testing in all of our buildings will be May 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 3rd, 4th and 5th. So it's, the spring air quality testing's coming up and we'll do that in, yeah, May. And we'll do, do that again in spring and fall.
Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion on the floor to adjourn? I have a motion by Mr. Payne. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Brower. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, aye. Travel safe.